Well, just since the tape is running, so this is the reconvened school committee meeting for the 14th of August 2012. And we have already discussed, we've had our announcements, our correspondence, and our public speak. We're now moving into discussion of subcommittee reports, specifically the policy review subcommittee. The minutes have been submitted from the August 6th meeting, and now we are going through first readings.
Right. So what we were discussing is the acceptable use policy and the basically revamping of the policy that we had adopted in 2010, and bringing it up to date based on John Schott's research into other school districts' acceptable use policy, and information that he has compiled from his field of expertise. So you had in your packet the current policy and the proposed policy. And tonight is the first reading of the new policy. And we would just need a motion to approve to go forward with that, or if you have any questions.
So we're now looking at JM acceptable use policy, specifically, not the whole host of them?
Right. We're going to go through one of these one at a time.
This is the last one in the packet, right?
Correct.
Yep.
And you're looking for a first reading?
Correct.
Move to accept this as a first reading of policy JM acceptable network use.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the first reading of the JM acceptable use policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And in follow-up to that, we also reviewed the Facebooking social.
Social media.
What used to be called Facebook and social networking websites, it's now the social media policy. And you can see the changes that we made to that, basically changing staff members to...
It's good to go on.
Sorry, these are little...
It's okay. I'll find it.
Superintendent School Principals will annually remind?
Social media.
That's how the new policy begins?
Yes.
We changed the employees to, or excuse me, teachers and staff members to cover all employees. We deleted the paragraph D that said, "Teachers do not give out their private cellphone or home phone numbers without prior approval of the district." And we did that because there are cases where that does become necessary, like cases such as field trips and sporting events, sports for coaches, and so forth.
Move to accept this as a first reading of policy IJNDD, social media.
Second.
Just to be sure to clarify that last piece about the coaching, I'm looking at the new policy and not...
We removed that.
Remove that piece, right? It just says, the piece in the coaching that I thought was important is it said that any communication with the team has to go to everybody on the team unless it's medical specific. Right? Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. The next group of policies, you might have received in the mail, the packet from the policy.
Now go back up, right?
The very policy news, you'll have to receive that in the mail.
Yes.
The very first one talks about executive session. So Nancy actually brought all of these changes to the policy subcommittee meeting to talk about, talking about them at a later meeting. But because these are mostly mandated by the state, as far as the changes are concerned, I didn't feel it was necessary, or the committee really didn't feel it was necessary that we meet again to discuss that. We felt we were comfortable just bringing them straight to the full school committee for approval.
Move that we can, we accept this as a first reading of the new policy BEC on executive sessions.
Well, before we do that, I'm sorry.
We discussed this at the last meeting. Well, discuss, that's...
I'm siding the way she's going, so we're bouncing around.
Our current policy is BEC, but it looks like it's being changed to BEC, so there's quite a bit difference. But it does bring it up to speed with the open meeting laws.
This is the one that requires that the superintendent and the school committee chair quarterly meet to review and determine whether any minutes from executive committee sessions can now be released. Right? That's the one? I haven't scrolled to it, but that's what I'm remembering.
Correct. It basically covers all the, the session reasons, reasons for meeting, and how to handle the minutes.
You're like, we're working for the CIA.
So, yes.
Motion's on. Let's see, one, two, three, four.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the first reading of the BEC executive session that will be changed to BEC. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then there are several policies that needed to be changed due to gender identity anti-discrimination statute. Some of these we do have in our policy book, others we, I found that we did not. So we can start with the non-discrimination.
Can you go back to the top?
AC.
AC. Basically, have the current and the proposed, and we are looking for a first reading on that one as well.
So move that we accept this as a first reading of the new policy AC on non-discrimination.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the first reading on the new non-discrimination policy AC. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The second is the non-discrimination on the basis of sex. You have the current and the proposed, and this would be your first reading.
Move to accept this as the first reading of policy ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the first reading of non-discrimination on the basis of sex, ACA. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And the next one is equal opportunity employment policy, GBA, adding gender identity to the list of criteria.
Move to accept this as the first reading of the new, the changed policy, GBA, on equal employment opportunities?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to accept the first reading of the new policy JB, on equal educational opportunities. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next one in my, in the policy news newsletter is GCF professional staff hiring. That one, I don't believe was in your packet. We don't have a GCF that I can find in our policy manual, but we do have other policies that are similar, that really cover it as a whole, as far as hiring principles and so forth. So, do you have any comments on that?
I'm sorry, I'm which?
On the GCA, excuse me, the GCF, professional staff hiring.
I think...
We didn't include it in the packet.
Yeah, I didn't include it either.
So...
Okay. Didn't discuss it.
Okay, so...
But I, doesn't the policy, I'm sorry, but I thought the new policy on equal educational opportunities, that's the, I thought one of them spoke to hiring. Didn't it? When I read through these...
The non-discrimination ones will speak to hiring, some extent.
Right. So it seemed to me that there was, there's a little bit of the, you know, Department of Redundancy Department in this language. So, but I remember thinking, in fact, I was just briefly coming, because I wasn't at the August 6th meeting, these laws sound as though they are about as bright and blue a line as you could draw, saying that you can't engage in affirmative action, as I've seen written. I mean, they're very clear, that you cannot consider any of these things as a factor in hiring. So I think that the policies that were in the packet go a long way towards accomplishing any protections that this GCF hiring, the one from the, from this, I think we, I guess my sense is, I think we've got it, but I, maybe we should refer that back to the policy subcommittee to double check.
So I think there are three on this list, the GCF, the IJ we need to look at, because our IJ guidance program, JBA...
JBA, student to student interaction.
SUE, and school choice, JFBB, that we'll have to...
And I'm also having Sue look into getting us a new index, because apparently the index that we have is outdated, and so our letters aren't matching the letters of the new policies.
Who meets up these letters? Just a quick answer.
So may I see, right? So this is the Association of School Committees' proposed policies that were simply adopted.
Okay. So we can go on to the one that was in our policy in our packet, equal educational opportunities, JBB, for a first reading.
Yeah, it's sort of, it's sort of near the end, one up from the end.
You skipped JNDD.
Oh, no.
No, we did that early.
We did that early, sorry, Sue, we did that early. We took a vote to accept the first reading of IN, IJNDD. Got it? Are we good? Okay, thanks.
Move to accept this as a first reading of the proposed new policy JB, equal educational opportunities.
Second.
Sorry. Now I'm looking for, motion made in second to accept the new policy, which one am I?
It's a pretty strong...
JB, right. JB, equal educational opportunities. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe that is...
I think that's it.
Let us see.
That's it. So I guess I just, oh, go ahead.
I know, I actually, I was just going to mention that our next meeting is August 14th. August 30th, 5:30.
Policy meeting, 50 p.m. And that's all involved. Nancy, I'm just curious, right, because you have a background in law, right? Were you, right, you taught this stuff? Were you struck by the, how that, how the language of these policies? I mean, it really seems to me as though it says East Hampton, that in no way could our school system engage in any form of affirmative action in its hiring. Am I misreading?
I don't know that I literally can play. I mean, that's a whole other area.
Okay. I was just, like I said, I missed the meeting, so only had the chance to read through the policies in the packet and then in the note there. Just curious. I think the jury's still out on that topic, so, although I guess the Supreme Court's going to take on yet another case this fall. Is there anything, Lori from CES?
No, no report.
Thank you. Any other items for discussion? Okay. And we'll move to the superintendent's report.
So in your packet, I gave you the final accounting of choice and charter monies in and out of the district. Just for information for you, you can see that our choice receiving has gone up a little bit over FY11. Our choice sending has gone down some from FY11. And our charter sending has gone down some, which is all good news for us, and that's extra money into our accounts.
And these numbers won't match the numbers on my annual reports, because you netted that. And we show, there's a certain amount of money in this, in this year, I think it was $80,000 in FY12, that's provided on the cherry sheet to help offset some of the charter spending. I don't net the numbers, and so you see that as a separate number in my reports, because the choice receiving never hits the city's books.
Right.
Strictly for the school department.
Right. But are you saying that the $80,000 for the charter does hit the city's books? Or does that also just come straight?
No, that hits the city's books.
That hits the city's books.
It's an offset of charter expenses.
So the actual charter tuition is $515,460, not $434,000.
But we're comparing, you know, our, our...
These are net numbers here on your...
Yeah, net to net here, on the sheet. So it is showing a slight decrease. And you can see that in the numbers of students leaving as well.
Questions or comments about the choice and charter data?
Oh, and just as a point of clarification, you see parts of a student here, nine tenths and four tenths. It actually, this is an indicator of students who moved in and out of the district over the year.
Is that, are you, you're, yeah, okay, good, I'm looking at the same thing. Gotcha. So FD. I mean, I guess I, I think that we know that that, seeing this data and being able to track this data, so long as we're comparing apples and apples every year, this is the new reality. And this is the place where we can earn resources for the schools without going to the taxpayers. Right? And that's, this, I hope, is something that would continue to make progress based on this investment that we're making of $1.4 million. And while I, right, if I've got, tell me if I've got the numbers right, if the choice receiving number is 40, 30, it's about an $80,000 net positive number from FY11 to FY12. Right? So I know 80,000, I don't know what 80,000 is on 1.2 million. It's not a great rate of return.
The choice receiving?
I was doing it as an aggregate, taking all the good news in dollar amounts, and saying that that's the number that we want to see grow. That part of the theory behind, or our hope and our expectation behind the impact of the override and the investments that we make with the success of the override would be that we would grow that number from 80,000 from FY11 to FY12 to 180,000 to 280,000 going forward. Now, if you get to...
You shrink the number.
Right. That, yeah. So, I guess, just as, since, one of the things that the gentleman came and spoke to us about elections and, and said that sharing information, this is objective information about something that we think is linked to the override, and showing the voters the impact that this would have on, you know, going forward, means that that's money that would come into the school system, and therefore wouldn't have to come from the general tax bill. If we, if we were able to generate $100,000 or $200,000 more by continuing to make progress on charter and choice...
Well, yeah. It would have to, if you make progress on choice and charter out, it has to be appropriated to benefit the school department.
Right.
If you make progress on choice in, it has nothing to do with the mayor's budget.
Right.
And so, and so my estimates, what are important down the road, is that the estimates that are used in the budgeting are as close to being accurate as they can be. Because that, that's the basis for the budget moving forward. If I, and I don't have the FY13 budget in front of me, hopefully I guessed a number that's going to be very close to what the real number is.
Right.
Because that affected the bottom line in the school department's budget.
Sure.
And so if, if a future budget, that estimate is not close, if it's off, especially if it's off estimating it much higher than it really is, then that really affects the ability of the school department to receive any of the funding to spend on what the school committee has authority over.
Right. For a year, though, because if they're off, then you adjust in another year.
Well, I do.
Right?
But you want to watch that moving forward to make sure that, because that's a number that has to be estimated when the budget's put forward. There is a cherry sheet, on the state cherry sheets that are based on the budgeting, there is a number, and that's the number that we try to use. That number firms up in about the end of March. And so usually the governor's cherry sheet, you can, you can take the number, but it's not really very clean. And so you want to keep adjusting that number until you get it as close as you can to the, to the final budget numbers.
Okay.
Here's a question I have. I know we don't have only one of the seats in our classrooms. That's right. So...
So it's hard to increase the receiving number unless you have places to put children?
Right. So it's great if the sending number goes down, but then we won't be able, maybe this is what you were saying, we won't have as many seats for receiving.
Well, if the sending number goes down, yeah, I guess, I guess if the gross number of student population doesn't change, and more of them come to school, you'll have less room for choice in.
Yeah. If it goes down.
But we'll have a higher amount in the foundation budget, too, if they're not leaving our district.
Right.
As far as capacity, that's what I'm getting.
Right. Right. No, it's true.
Classroom sizes.
Yeah. I don't know where we are with that.
We'll have a little bit extra in the high school.
Yeah. We have extra in the high school. We don't have too many seats left. You know, we opened a number of choice slots, and we filled them, but not at all grade levels. And then, you know, we did talk earlier this year about the fact that we have 16 students on our waitlist for kindergarten.
How many?
16. We had 16 earlier. So we did talk at leadership team about the possibility of opening another kindergarten class, but you have to weigh that against the cost of the teacher and the cost of the paraprofessional, and of course, the insurance piece, and...
What's a kindergarten student worth?
It's a kindergarten student worth?
What do you say?
Around $5,000.
So it's 80, $8,000 now?
We talked about this. We had a very, I remember we had this discussion, and it's 80,000...
Over time.
It's a pig in a python. It does get smaller because of the adjustments, but, but that, that's 80,000 that we...
It doesn't get small.
No. The extra $5,000 will keep on going. One of the other issues that we talked about, so we figured when we calculated the expenses of opening another classroom, that would, we'd end up getting about $20,000 from that money going in. But the other thing that would happen is we would create this bubble. In the structure that our schools are in now, that causes us a problem with moving kids back and forth among all the schools, because we've got a bubble that goes up through. So instead of six kindergarten classrooms, we'd have seven. And then we'd have to move that into the first grade and create another first grade classroom. So we just didn't feel that we were prepared to do that this year for an extra $20,000, possibly, 20.
Well, and, and in general, smaller kindergarten class sizes.
That's right. Well, and the other thing is that, you know, these are the children that are on the waitlist, but until we actually get them to commit, we're not positive that they're all coming in. So it just didn't seem like this year was the right thing to do. But it's something that was certainly looked at in the future, you know, with other things that we might have in mind.
We also talked about not knowing if there were special needs in kindergarten.
Right. Which costs, adds an other cost to the district as well.
Isn't the core piece, though, that is, of the three numbers that are here, while the choice receiving offers this possibility that we've just been discussing, the real numbers where we do know about the students, where we know more about the students, at least potentially, is in reducing the choice and charter sending.
Yes.
So I look at our fiscal year 12 expenditures at being 1,500...
1,575.
1,575. Thank you. 1,575. And that our goal, I think, is to get that number down by holding on to as many of the children in East Hampton, the holding on is wrong, by attracting those who might be inclined to look to stay. Because those are students that we know best. Those are students whose parents and families live in the town and build the kind of support that we want for the community. So I like this data and would like to continue to track it. I think you've provided it to us before, Nancy, but I think having those three numbers sort of, you know, available and saying, here's, here's one way, right, we talked about all the tools that are being used to evaluate superintendents and individual teachers. I think one numerical way of measuring the quality of what's happening in these Hampton Public School System is what's happening in those two numbers. And that the fact that we're moving in the right direction is great, and that the investment in the override will help further with that, just like the opening of the new high school is going to help further with reducing the number of students that we send through choice and charter.
I mean, I think it's important to remember there are a lot of variables, but I think that it does indicate, we would hope that it would indicate confidence, more confidence in our school, you know, that our schools are more attractive to our parents and our community. We've certainly put a lot of things into place in our schools to try to promote a positive image of these Hampton Public Schools, and so we certainly hope that that's the case here in these numbers. But then, you know, as you know, we had to make a number of cuts this year, so classroom teachers were cut, class sizes have gone up a bit, and, you know, that, that may impact it as well.
And just a reminder of what Mike said, we want to make sure that if that sending number goes down, that we keep an eye on the appropriation of that savings, because it really should come back to the school.
Well, the more reason to keep this data point continuing, is part of what we've talked about, is continue to keep us informed about that. So that's...
I just want to echo what Nancy just said, because I feel strongly about it, even though it's already been said. I don't think that these numbers state the quality of the education.
No.
At any standard. I don't think this is a way to measure whether we are doing, this is not a way to evaluate our schools. I disagree that this is a way to evaluate, just like we have student evaluation, faculty, staff evaluations. This is not a way to do it.
But it does represent 15%.
Too many other variables. There's too many variables. This doesn't say we don't have quality education.
But it does represent 15% of the population. 15% of the student population in this system are not here.
Yes. But I still don't think it is a way to, we don't know, we don't know enough about it. We don't know about why, why, and how.
I agree. And that's a problem, I think.
Well, I think it is, too.
Not having, not having the data is a real problem, because how do you address the problem if you don't have the data to understand how to change, to reattract these...
And it's very difficult data to obtain.
No, it's not. It's very difficult data to get people to release. You have all the data. You know who all these people are.
Yes.
Talked about doing another survey.
Yes. And we have done some surveys this year and gotten some comments back. When we do surveys, what we get back is pretty consistent. Class size, programs, you know, breadth of opportunities for students, facilities. In fact, I can, I've got a collection of the surveys that we have, and I'd be happy to distribute them to you, or, you know, call statements from them, but...
And well, a question, do we verify that? I mean, someone says, "I'm going to Hampshire Regional because class sizes are smaller." Are they?
Well, that's their perception.
Well, that's what I mean.
But that's what I'm getting at.
Variables. You see, that's what I mean. Just because we have, someone thinks that, and writes, and believes it, maybe, yeah, I don't know. That doesn't mean it's true.
Well, and I would...
Because I don't hear other school committees complaining about class sizes. I don't. You know, the only time we read, the only time I read about people talking about class sizes is when we do it. I don't see anything in the newspaper about Hampshire Regional worried about class sizes.
Well, I think that's because they do have low class sizes. I have, I have looked at their class sizes. I have compared it in the past. And parents who choice out normally go and, you know, check out the schools, or have somebody whose family, children are in the schools, that kind of thing. Yeah. They do have small class sizes there, and consistently, so...
That's a pretty facility.
It's a very attractive facility.
Well, that, that one you can't address. If, if someone's going there because the campus looks better, or the building looks better, you know, that's not an educational reason to choose a different school.
It's not often the reason that will get them.
No.
Right. There's that, there's that factor as well. I think that some people will pick a politically appropriate reason, rather than being candid about, "It's on the way to my commute to work."
Yeah. Or, "I don't like so-and-so in this particular building," or whatever.
Right. And I, and I want to just, I don't think that this means that you don't disagree, Nancy, but I do want to clarify that I see it as one of a wide array, and at the end of the day, I, what I see more than anything else is, and what I hope to accomplish more than anything else, is to continue to reduce the number of students who elect to exercise their choice or charter. I think, for example, one of the things that we've talked about in the override, is providing world language instruction in the elementary schools. Now, I know when that came up, that folks in North Hampton went, "Woo!" Because that's, that's a topic there, because they're close as well to charter and choice options where that's possible. So from my perspective, let's, let's draw those families back in by saying you can learn Spanish. I think most parents want their child to learn a language, more than a particular language. But if we offered language... But if we offered language in our elementary program and it helped bring students in, that would lower these numbers, so the numbers would reveal a good trend. That's all. Again, I think we probably still disagree, but that's the sense that I meant is that when you're making progress in the public view of the school, I think these numbers get better for the school system. Or certainly I hope that they will do so if the override passes, when the override passes.
I know somewhere Nancy, you had this broken down by grade level too, which is helpful to see.
I think I gave you that chart earlier this year.
Because you're right, 16 kids into kindergarten versus 16 kids interspersed without the grades, that's a lot easier to handle than 16 kids in one.
Coming up through, isn't that... At any rate, we continue to look at it, we continue to talk about it, and we continue to try to find ways to turn those numbers around. I think that the anecdotal information in the district, the stat to me from principals is that, you know, they have some families who are coming back to East Hampton, who've gone to other schools and are hearing good things about what's going on in our schools and are returning to the East Hampton Public Schools. And so I think one of the things that happens and is very powerful is that word of mouth. So, you know, if you're sending your kids to our schools and you have a neighbor who's wondering whether to send their children elsewhere, and they can be talking about the positive things in our schools, that is a huge way to help to continue to improve the perception of the East Hampton Public Schools as a place where all students can get a quality education. Okay, any other questions on that? All right. So the strategic plan is next on my report. At the leadership team retreat in July, we took the plan that we had, that we created last year. And we looked at it because if you remember last year's plan, it had year one initiatives and then it had years two and three initiatives. So we looked at the years two and three initiatives, because we're in year two, to see what we thought we could or should move into our current initiatives. And so we've changed the captions for this to be current initiatives and future initiatives. And in the student achievement strategic objective, we looked at vertically aligned curriculum K to 12 with the Common Core. We started doing that already this summer. We've got teacher groups working on aligning the curriculum. We have the new Common Core in math and English Language Arts and the state test, the MCAS, is going to reflect the new Common Core, so it's imperative that we begin to, or that we do get our curriculum aligned. And we hope to have that done in the first half of this year. And our ambitious goal is to get it done this fall. So all of our teachers do have the new Common Core documents so that they can use those clearly as they're thinking about their lesson and unit plans this year. But to have a written curriculum, district curriculum K to 12 will be a support for all teachers in this. In the strategic objective of educator excellence, we added develop and implement a district-wide teacher administrator evaluation system aligned with state evaluation standards because clearly as a race to the top district, it's going to be a major focus of our work this year. We've already worked on it with our teachers in May and June. There'll be some more professional development in August and we will be putting this into place this year. In the resource alignment, we moved identified needs and secure additional resources to support strategic objectives. I think this aligns very nicely with the override initiative and all of the work that we're all doing to try to support this strategic objective and to secure additional resources. Again, to, you know, my belief is that, you know, the more positive things we do in terms of promoting the reputation of East Hampton Public Schools, the more we will attract additional resources, secure and attract additional resources. And we have some other ideas that we're going to put into place for that this year as well. So any questions on that? We did actually, in the future initiatives, we did change number nine under strategic objective educator excellence to, we had one on walkthrough practices. And what we're really doing is, because there are so many unobserved observations in the new evaluation system, we just reworded that to say, to redefine our walkthrough practices to align with the strategic objectives and the educator evaluation system. That is the strategic plan. And then next on my report is, we got an email communication from the override committee asking us if we had finished our vision statement. And if you remember, at one of our previous meetings, we worked on a statement and Deb Luznia drafted one that evening. We talked about it, but didn't come to consensus on it. You know, we do have a vision statement in our strategy, our strategic plan, but it is a lengthy vision statement. And so Deb thought that it might be effective for us to have a concise statement that the committee for stronger schools could use. And so I made a copy of that and put it here for you all to discuss tonight.
I have a problem with appropriate classroom sizes because it seems to me that that means the physical shape of the room needs to be appropriate. I'm not sure that that's what we need.
It does, but I think that...
But I mean, maybe getting rid of the word room is what needs to be done. Because when you say appropriate classroom size to me, I'm thinking, is it 12 by 14? Is it 30 by 25?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So maybe just the word class, if we're talking about the number of students with one teacher.
Yeah, no, I think that it makes it clearer.
Other thoughts or comments about the vision statement? I know that, and I think I should have mentioned this before, that Deb can't be with us tonight because she was called away at the last moment, but I'm sure that any feedback we provide, she would incorporate into revising this.
I would say on the second bullet point, high quality staff, we normally use, I think, the terminology, highly qualified staff.
You know, we do, it is an indicator from the state. We have to ensure that all of our teachers are highly qualified and there are criteria for that. So I think this notes that we want a high-quality staff, highly qualified, or highly qualified staff.
It's actually right in our longer vision statement we sampled, high-quality staff. I'm kind of comparing the two to make sure the vision statement kind of restates in shorter terminology. I think that's what the point was of this exercise.
Yeah, the interesting thing is that the vision statement, for me, even though it's longer, works better than the bullet points.
Or at least the first sentence.
You're right. East Hampton Public Schools provide high-quality staff, rich educational experiences, state-of-the-art resources, and a collaborative environment that includes students, families, and community.
I wonder if you could do that in bullets and it would be clear and concise.
It just, it simply adds, I think, the idea about bringing family and community together, which isn't in the short version.
So if you could say that East Hampton Public Schools provide, and then bulleted, high-quality staff, bullet, rich educational experiences, bullet, state-of-the-art resources, bullet, a collaborative environment that includes students, families, and community.
I'd like that.
You know, the only thing that I, no, this guy's captured there.
It doesn't say anything about class sizes that she had bullet pointed.
I think that that...
Or facilities. Does it say facilities?
State-of-the-art resources.
It's my sense that starting off with discussion, even setting aside the confusion about whether we're talking about the physical space or the number of people there, it's at a lower level than the other three bullets.
Which is that along?
In terms of its importance, in terms of emphasizing it's part of our vision.
Well, it's almost a piece that makes up one of the other...
Yeah, it's a sub, what I mean is it's a subset, right? High-quality staff, right, textbooks, technology, and facilities, together, they produce the educational experiences. But I agree with the bullet suggestion that was made previously about the existing vision statement.
I wonder if you want to add something about facilities, state-of-the-art facilities, resources and facilities, facilities and resources.
I'm not sure if I can speak on the public side on that.
Sure, you may. Please.
Thank you. Just on my side, I mean, looking in the school, familiar with the school world, I think it might be helpful just to say actually what the vision is for this particular override. I think everybody knows that we're really trying to have high-quality education and the best we can do for our students. I think it's really more like, what does this particular override mean to that part? Because if you just like copy and paste the other vision, they'll be saying like, hey, so all of our money does this, nothing better. You know, I think if you go, for example, saying like, this will enable us to get technology in the 25th century or, and I don't know exactly what it's, just thinking like, our vision is to have state-of-the-art technology at our disposal for the students or things like that.
It sounds like, in other words, that the vision that we have under the strategic plan is written in the present tense. We have it. East Hampton provides. And the vision for the override is like something we are looking for. The vision of what we can get that we don't have yet.
I agree. I think we need to be specific for the override purposes. So it doesn't sound like a politician being so bright, I have this great plan. Okay, but how are you going to get there? Or what are you going to do to make it happen? And well, this is what we want. We want appropriate class sizes. We want high-quality staff, you know, technology and great facilities versus this broader vision accuracy.
But also, a vision is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead Nancy.
And I think when we wrote the vision for the strategic plan, a vision really is, what down the road do we want it all to look like? Now, that may not be what we want for this override. You may want it, you know, more tailored. But, you know, I think a vision is about, this is where we want to be. You know, and then the plan, the strategy is how we're going to get there.
Well, yeah, and I think that you can use, I like the current vision, to be honest. Deb, I thank Deb for putting the pieces together. I think adding, taking that first sentence and straightening it out into bullets makes sense. And then the specifics that we believe the override would provide would fit under each of those bullets. You know, and so, you know, provide high-quality staff. Well, yes, with this override, we want to be able to bring in nine teachers, whatever, I don't recall the numbers. To do this, this, and this. And with this override, we want to be able to provide state-of-the-art resources. We want to be able to provide technology or whatever else is in the list. So I think the vision statement needs to, I don't think we should change the vision statement of the system because there's an override. But I think we need to tie in what the override will provide to the vision statement.
And I think we're all talking the same thing. It's just a matter of terminology.
I think you're absolutely right.
We have this great vision statement, but here's little things that we want to get done with the override.
And just maybe for the override, maybe we shouldn't, maybe we don't need to use the word vision statement. I don't know. What I am thinking, that we were hoping for, and correct me if I'm absolutely off base, is that when it came to the override, we were looking for something concise and jazzy and to present to the public and say, this is what the override, this is why we need it. This is what we see. This is the reason for the override. This is what it's going to provide us. This is why you should catch on to this. This is why, you know, so maybe it's really two different things. I mean, I love the vision for our strategic plan. I certainly don't want to change that. But maybe it's, you're looking for marketing.
Basically, yeah.
Right.
We have a vision. Here are some goals.
I don't know. I don't know how, I don't know what the...
But we have in the budget proposal that you provided that delineated how the 1.45, that file's still upstairs. Right, we broke that down in terms of what it would mean. And if I'm understanding the conversation correctly, we want to translate either a consolidated group or each of those points as to how they fit into the existing vision. So as to help people in the committee understand how the budget override is going to move us closer to realizing what we're describing. But we've got a fairly specific delineation about creating a capital fund for technology so that we can be sure that, you know, history teachers have document cameras in their classroom, in each classroom, that can be used by every student, you know. That level of specificity may be too much, but that's how you could translate things down from, we want technology, so we have a capital fund coming out of this override in support of technology. Well, here's a specific example right now of something that we don't have that we want to have in the classroom.
Well, maybe what we need is a work group, another meeting. I like Mike's idea. I like Mike's idea, taking the vision, I like our vision. I think it's a strong vision, but I also understand and I see your point, Peter, and I think this is what you're saying, Peter, is that we want to say, and this is, in the override, this is how we'll get it. And this is how we'll get this in the override, part of the vision. And maybe we can make it jazzy and, you know, really have a punch to it. But I think our vision statement words have a punch to them. I really do. I think, I don't want to lose those. And I do, but I do think if we tie the reality to it, the override pieces to it, and think of a way of marketing it, you know, that might. But I think, I don't know that we're going to be able to do that tonight.
And we won't be raising what appears to be what you believe is a real problem about class size. Because if we throw class size into one of the bullets, I mean, we're just highlighting what I'm guessing is the perception out there. We're just feeding into that perception.
Good point, Mike.
I mean, I realize it's a valid issue and it's genuine, but we shouldn't be the ones...
But you know, we can get at lowering class size by providing high-quality staff. We can get at lowering class size.
Rich educational experience.
Rich educational experiences.
By having one-on-one and being able to have quality time individually tailored to students. I mean, there's a lot of ways to say that smaller classes are better without saying our classes are too big. And I think we tend to say our classes are too big. Maybe that deliberately, but I get, that's what I hear when we talk about class size. Our classes are too big.
Well, I really think you can see, right, I mean, I think we're not going to get to that.
Okay.
I don't know. We need a...
Well, we're meeting on...
Time's ticking, of course.
The time is ticking.
Definitely.
Well, you know, I would be happy to get in touch with Deb Luznia and share our ideas with her. And she's got a background in marketing. And see if we can come up with another, you know, another idea. And we could set a time and then let all of you know what that time is. And anybody who can join us can do that.
Well, in light of that, timing wise... Right, it's more than four of us get together. The policy subcommittee meeting on the 30th, it's scheduled to meet at 5:30, has an agenda that of, is it two more, three more policies?
I'm not sure which policies.
Right. I guess my point is that since we already have a meeting scheduled there and that it would be posted, we could, and it's an open meeting because it's a posted meeting, we could include in that meeting a discussion of the vision statement. I don't suppose it belongs in the finance subcommittee any more than it does in the policy subcommittee, but you already have a posted, a meeting that will be posted, right?
It will be posted.
It will be posted. Sorry. I'm just offering that as a suggestion. You already have...
Peter, I guess I would suggest that that could be maybe a second meeting, but that's getting late into August. So maybe, you know, we could do an initial meeting, you know, and we could see if, how many people wanted to join that initial meeting.
Oh, that's what, 48-hour posting requirement? So you just need two days' notice.
Maybe you could work with Deb a little bit before that, maybe have some preparation so that maybe draft to look at.
That sounds good.
This is all for material that's going to be sent out to the public, right?
Right. It's all website, the long day part, then also once we have the fundraiser, then we save it for the other side of the fly as well.
And I think we should keep that other meeting, the policy subcommittee meeting, as a, because I'm guessing we may need to...
If necessary, hopefully.
We need a jingle.
They need a jingle.
They need a jingle.
They need a jingle.
They need a song. Tap dance.
All right. Any further, any further questions, Nancy, if you want?
I'm sorry. No.
Not yet.
No, I'm good. Any other questions on that for me or...
All right, before we move to matters for action, I just wanted to take a moment to emphasize again, we spoke in a previous meeting about our evaluation of the superintendent's performance in her second year as the leader of the East Hampton Public School System, and evaluations again are a matter of public record, they are available in the office. The assistant superintendent, Sue Colby, can provide access, she's sort of the gatekeeper, yes, right? People have to come to see you, but I, I think I accurately summarized before and will just say again, that the committee was, we feel fortunate in East Hampton to have Nancy's leadership and service on behalf of the students. We have also concluded this evening and by unanimous agreement, reached a decision on awarding, on the basis of that evaluation, a merit payment of $1,000 to the superintendent for the upcoming year. We all know the financial realities that we face and the, and the difficult times that the economy presents us, but we were unanimous in our sentiment that we, we wanted to recognize your excellent service, Superintendent Folsby, so this is just a public announcement of that decision that was taken earlier this evening by the, by the school committee. And again, we thank you and we look forward to another great year of service working together this year. Okay, we have some matters for action.
Actually, before that, one of the last pieces of information in our packet was the recall, the appointments and the resignations. And I asked Nancy if she could just talk about the music program, because there's some, some pretty significant changes. We've already seen changes, it's a fine program, and I just thought for public's sake that it would be nice to hear what those changes are.
Sure, I'd be happy to share that with you. As you know, Patrick Lennon, who was at the high school, is now going to be the music director, teacher at the middle school. He will do the jazz band and the programs at the middle school. And we're very pleased to have hired John Wainleavich, I hope I pronounced his name correctly, for the high school. He has just a very interesting background and comes very highly recommended. He is a pianist and vocalist for a band called Barefoot Truth that's been touring for three years. But in addition to that, he had recommendations from his professors at Westfield State. I'm just going to read a couple of little snippets to you. This is one of his professors. He was also one of the strongest musicians we have been privileged to teach at Westfield State. He is an excellent jazz and classical pianist, a trumpet player, and a good singer. He is easily in the top 10% of all student teachers I have supervised over the past 35 years. Don't hire him unless you're prepared for an outstanding music program at your school. There you go. And here is, let's see, well, there are others just like that, but what I also wanted to share with you is that when I talked to Dr. Ferrone, he said to me that when the candidates came in to interview, they were asked to do a little performing, and he said that he just blew them away. He actually composes and arranges music, he's very strong with choral programs, he also teaches acting. And when I talked to him, you know, I'm very interested in strengthening our choral program at the high school, and he said that is something that he would love to do, you know, he's done a lot of it. He's also equally talented with instrumental programs, so I think that, you know, we are just going to be delighted with this new hire. And Bonnie, when you asked me that, and I was kind of getting things ready to talk about tonight, I thought, you know, I really should showcase each of the new teachers that we brought into our district, because we've got some amazing teachers that we've hired this year with some very interesting backgrounds, and so I would certainly like to, to share those with you at a future meeting.
I think it'd be good to try to get the paper interested in something like that. Those are always so very good news, you know, and...
I'm a step ahead of you, Mike. I already talked to Barbara, you know, about this, and I said, Barbara, you know, we've got some new teachers who have some really interesting backgrounds and really kind of spectacular backgrounds, and she said, oh, maybe I could do a story on them. And I said, well, I think that would be a great idea. So I think she will pursue that. Yeah, and I agree with you, Mike.
Are the staff okay with, have you talked, I presume you...
I haven't, but...
No, you should.
I will.
I'm sure you will.
I will.
Some folks are not comfortable with that.
But you have a time when a lot of the arts programs are looking at cuts, I just thought it was great to hear.
Especially to say that, look, the music program is thriving and we've got a great new, a great new teacher.
We just hired this very experienced, yep. Yeah, he's young and vibrant, and the other comments about him are how he just brings out the best in his students and that, you know, he develops great rapport with them. And I've met him, you know, I do an interview with each of the new candidates, and I was just impressed with him, you know, right from the start, as I was with all the other ones who have come in to meet with me, and that's what made me think about, you know, showcasing them, you know, to you, to each of you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you, Nancy. That's terrific.
Move to approve the minutes of July 24th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of July 24th, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you want to prepare on that?
Sure.
What happened to the, the drink machine?
It's coming.
Is it in the air? Opportunity for me to tell you something else at some point, too.
Sure, you want us to stop now, because we were just going to roll right through to the...
Yeah, because I just, I just saw my note, I got so excited about the new teachers. I forgot my note. I also wanted to share with you something else that I think is really, I'm very pleased about. The DPW, city DPW, has worked with our maintenance department, Pete Roy, and they're doing a good amount of paving over at Whitebrook. They paved, well, and thank you to the DPW, they paved down the road, the bus loop, up the other road, and then I went down with Pete and I said, you know, I really want this parking lot paved. So they're paving the left parking lot as much as they can with the resources we have. We're using capital money for safety and security improvements that we had from the city, and so I'm delighted about it. Even the part where, you know, you step off in the parking lot and there's this grass area that's all mud and water, they're going to pave that over, so, you know, I think it's going to make it easier for our senior citizens in particular who come to see our evening shows, to do that in safety and safety. I'm just delighted.
And they are trying to improve the base where they can.
Rather than just, right.
Well, yeah, the problem there, as you, as you could surmise, is the base, what the pavement was put on is not, is not stable. And so they're trying to do, they aren't doing it in the parking lot, but in this new area they are, and they're trying to improve it where they can. The advantage is we own a paver. The city owns a small paver, which allows us to do that kind of work.
So we are just in front of my house.
Call the DPW, 529-1410, and let them know about it, because we may not even know it's there.
I have, dear.
You have.
Yeah.
On the list, kind of going along the line of Whitebrook, what are those two tractor-trailer stewards?
Winos for the high school, maybe?
Ah.
Neither, neither an offsite place to store it, and Pete thought that the, that the old tennis court should work out well.
Yeah.
Did I, did I miss the announcement about the new Whitebrook Middle Vice Principal?
Was it in?
Is that at the last meeting?
Oh, it hasn't been in yet?
Yeah, it was in the last meeting.
All right, the last meeting.
Just got it, I just got it.
Because there's a lot of them.
Right. I got it just with the letter, as a parent of a middle school student.
And I think she starts August 16th, I believe, is her starting date. But she's already been in to do some work with us, some professional development work with us, and we're very excited about it.
What would be helpful is that the letters that go to parents get shared with the school team, so that, so that if you're not a middle school student, you know what the parents of middle school students have been...
Good idea.
Terrific. Terrific. Good news all the way around.
Okay.
Motion said payroll now.
Okay, move to approve school payroll dated August 2nd, 2012, in the amount of
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve school payroll dated 2, August 2012, in the amount of $7,360.92, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to approve school payroll dated August 9th, 2012, in the amount of $283,830.27.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the school payroll dated 9, August 2012, in the amount of $283,830.27.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the school payroll dated 9, August 2012, in the amount of $283,830.27. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to approve accounts payable authorization for payment dated August 9th, 2012, in the amount of $58,323.74.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 9, August 2012, in the amount of $58,323.74. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's all for now.
That's all for that. Now we have concussion. Sorry.
Really, vending machine first. Move to approve the request for a Coca-Cola vending machine and a snack box at Puffin School.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the request for a vending machine and snack box at Puffin School. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, all of, all of Pogues as well. And discussion-wise, the reason, the reason is, I still, I still think that staff and students should be treated the same, and we don't allow the students to have the snacks that are in that snack box or the cokes. And I don't know why we, we have two standards.
Why, we facilitate them having them? Good question.
It, it passed.
Oh, yeah, it has passed, but...
I personally agree.
I'm saying that I really do need to close that, so...
Yeah, I thought when I saw, I thought when I saw it, and I...
This one's from years ago, so...
Right, right.
This one's good.
All right. The handbook addendum request, the concussion policy at East Hampton High School and Whitebrook Middle School, you have the East Hampton School Committee has adopted concussion policy and regulations consistent with Massachusetts general laws. See this, the document I'm referring to?
And this is a summary that we are allowed by the state to create a summary for handbooks of the policy that you accepted, but this is an addendum to the handbooks. Needs to be approved.
So this is the part that goes into the public document of the students and teachers and families, half of them. Thank you. Discussion?
Motion to approve the addendums to the high school and Whitebrook handbook.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the handbook addendum request for the concussion policy and regulations for East Hampton High School and Whitebrook Middle School, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, have a good evening, folks.
Thank you.